So, we are ready to get started. And as usual, as I say, good evening and welcome to you. We are going to get started with an invocation. And to do that, we call on Pastor Granau to share with us, to lead us in prayer for this evening's event. Pastor Granau.
Good evening to everyone. Let us bow in prayers, please. Most gracious and loving Father, creator of all things that exist by your power and might, we give you thanks to God for bringing us here safely tonight. We pray on the behalf of each and everyone, including our political leader. We pray, God, that you will take control of this meeting and we pray, God, that we'll discuss vital things that confront us and the whole country as a whole. We pray, God, that as we continue to forge along, we pray, God, that you'll give us the dynamism, the wisdom and the understanding to go through all the issues that will be discussed tonight. And we pray, God, for the input of each and every participant. And we pray, God, that you bless this country, bless this political party. And that we pray, God, that you will help us to focus ahead and to put things together that this country may prosper and go on the right track. We pray, God, that you will give all the speakers wisdom and understanding that we may understand clearly those things that will be discussed. We pray for those who are to come here, will hasten their steps to be here so that they could participate and to understand all these things that will be discussed. Guide and protect us and give us wisdom and understanding for this, we pray in Christ's wonderful name. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much, Pastor Granau. So, once again, the really and truly, the pleasure is mine to be standing here this evening to share with you in such, on such an important event. Now, I wasn't supposed to be at the podium at this juncture. The chairperson for this evening's proceedings was earmarked to be the chairman, to be the secretary of our constituency branch, Brother Riquel Scott. But incidentally, he has some more pressing personal matters to take care of. So, we had a message from him this evening indicating that he's unable to be with us. And so, I have to take the position of chairing this event this evening. And incidentally, I am the chairman of this constituency branch. And standing here as the chairman of this constituency branch is a pleasure and an honour really, having previously served as the chairman of the St. John constituency branch from 2006 until November 2009. So, I really appreciate the reception and the embrace that I have experienced here in this constituency, St. Mark. Thank you. And so, it is in that frame of mind that I say good evening to our political leader, Brother Adrian Thomas, to our caretaker for the constituency branch, Mr. Jerome Thomas, to our presenters, Mr. Leo Kato and Dr. Stephen Fletcher, to other members of other constituency chairpersons, other caretakers we have in our midst here, Mr. Philip Telisford, who is the caretaker for St. George's South East constituency. And welcome to all those NDC supporters that are here and to those who may not necessarily be NDC supporters. Good evening and welcome to you. As we engage you in this discussion on a people's development agenda for rural communities, a poverty remedy. And this is taking place right here at Burnet Government School in St. Mark. That's Sunset City. Now, I made special reference to NDC supporters because although this is an open public event, without the support of the NDC, people like you, there will be no NDC here this evening putting on a programme like this. And so, it is you who have kept the NDC alive. And we appreciate that and we want you to give yourself a round of applause. However, we say thank you to all those who have chosen to join us, whether you are here or you are joining us on the live stream. Good evening and welcome to you. Now, I have been tasked to do just a short orientation this evening, okay? And having been involved in making this event happen and being tasked with the responsibility to provide an orientation to this discussion, a people's development agenda for the rural communities, a poverty remedy, I was challenged to identify practical realities that can serve as appropriate context for this discourse. Any discussion about community development must have, among other things, a major focus on people's development, productivity, job creation, poverty reduction. And the shrimp farm was supposed to provide, according to our parliamentary representative, some 300 jobs. It therefore means that people's hopes of job opportunities were magnified only to be deflated into nothing. I want to recognise the presence of the chairman of the National Democratic Congress, Mr. Terry Moore. Good evening and welcome to you, sir. Continuing, there must have been good reason why our Prime Minister said at the elaborate sword turning ceremony for that project. Here's what he said, I quote: "I've always been concerned about the lack of investment activities in the rural part of the country with the resulting problems, social and otherwise, created in the capital St. George's. Housing problems, water problem, sewage problem, roads and other problems created for the country." Unquote. That was our Prime Minister speaking at the sword turning ceremony for the shrimp farm. St. Mark, it was said, had the highest unemployment rate on the island. So, the decision to locate the project in northern Grenada was strategic, essentially to reduce the unemployment rate. Many of these conditions still exist and may have gotten worse since then. Another point of context is the kinds of discussion that, the kinds of decisions, sorry, that are made in the interest of the people are as a result of the decision that was made at the polls and which resulted in the decisions like the poultry and shrimp projects that promised so much and delivered nothing. I am also reminded that there was a time when the nutmeg pool here employed about 150 people during peak time. Now, Gwov is very much bigger, so you know they employed much more. Then you had those small buying points like Grand Roy and Concord and others in St. Patrick and so. And these people, they were paid every Thursday. In addition to that, well, the nutmeg farmers, they were making an income because they were selling nutmeg. In addition to that, during the time that I'm speaking about, you had the estate workers and you had the travel workers. And they were paid on alternate weeks. So that when you had one being paid this week, the other one was paid the following week. So, there was always that circulation of money in the rural economy. This is no more. And we have not developed alternative sources of employment, resulting in serious challenges to the overall economic livelihood of the communities. The workforce and job prospects have also evolved in recent years. And so, our policies and programmes must prepare us to make full use of our human, natural and heritage assets as we continuously enhance our prospects in the field of ICT. So, I trust that the context outlined here is in sync with the discussion that we'll be having here this evening. So, after some brief remarks from the St. Mark caretaker, Mr. Jerome Thomas, our political leader, Brother Adrian Thomas, he will present on our party's development policy framework. And then our two distinguished presenters, Mr. Leo Kato and Dr. Stephen Fletcher, will share with you. You will then have the opportunity to participate in this discourse. I will be your moderator throughout. Well, that's what I was earmarked to do here this evening, actually, to be the moderator, but the chairman is unable to be here. So, once again, welcome and thank you for joining us as we get into an exchange about poverty reduction through increased production and greater sustainable and rewarding job opportunities. Thank you and good evening. So, I really do hope that this short orientation has provided some context for the presentations that are to come, okay? It's at this juncture that the pleasure is mine because we're moving right along. It's at this juncture that the pleasure is mine to invite to the podium for some brief remarks, as I stated a while ago, from our caretaker, Mr. Jerome Thomas.
A pleasant good night to everyone. In particular to our deputy political leader, Mr. Adrian Thomas, other members of the, or the senior members of the party, Brother Leo Kato, Brother Stephen Fletcher, Brother Telisford, and who else am I missing out? Anyway, the chairman, Mr. Moore, Terry Moore, okay. It's a pleasure in having all of you here tonight. And to the members of the St. Mark's community and St. Patrick's, St. John's, wherever you are. The topic for discussion could not be more appropriate. A people's development agenda for the rural community, a poverty remedy. This is very appropriate in the light of the two major projects that were supposed to have taken place in St. Mark's and never materialised. That was very unfortunate. In our discussion this afternoon, I'm hoping that we will get ideas to see how we can transform this rural community of St. Mark's. I consider the whole of St. Mark's as rural. St. Patrick's also could be considered rural. How we can get ideas to start development. And I've always believed in development from the bottom up. In other words, people's involvement in development. Once you have development at a grassroots level, I consider this as sustainable. So, the ideas that are coming out from all of us, our party will take note of it, document it and see how we can move forward because it is crucial that the rural communities start to create employment for people at that level. It is sad, after all those years, the parliamentary representative of this parish have not done anything concrete that the people of St. Mark's could be proud of. So, not saying very much more because, as I said, ideas have to come from the bottom up. And I always believe for the rural community, that strategy could work and have to work because once you have people's involvement, you must get success. So, not much more I am saying. All I'm saying tonight now is that everyone pitching with your ideas at the end of the day, we will make it. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Thomas. And we, as the saying goes, we are not sticking. And we are going to go straight into the presentation by our political leader, Brother Adrian Thomas. And he will be sharing with us on our party's development policy framework. Brother Thomas. Before I, before I take my seat, I want to recognise in our midst the presence of our public relations officer, Sister Claudette Joseph. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. It's a pleasure to be in St. Mark one more time. But before I start my presentation, let me recognise the chairman of the National Democratic Congress and his wife, Mr. Mistress Moore. Let me also recognise the public relation officer, Sister Claudette Joseph, and also caretaker for the town of St. George, her deputy, Mr. Ron Redhead. Let me also recognise the caretaker for St. Mark, Brother Thomas. And I thought when the moderator said, "Thank you, Mr. Thomas", I thought he was thanking me already. Let me also recognise the caretaker for St. Patrick, for St. George's South East, Mr. Philip Telisford, one of the newcomers in the National Democratic Congress. Prospective caretaker, Mr. Leo Kato, for St. Andrews North East. The chairman of the St. Mark's branch, Brother Raphael Paul. My good friend, Brother Fletcher, who will be one of your presenters, one of the presenters here today, Assistant Secretary for the Western Area, Sister Andrea. Have I missed anybody? The NDC, the NDC media team, Brother Dunston and Brother Ron and the gentlemen that we have recruited in St. Mark's. Happy to have you all. Brothers and sisters, comrades all, good night. It's a pleasure always to discuss the work of the National Democratic Congress. And it's even more to highlight some of the programmes in terms of how we see things, how things ought to be in Grenada. Fortunate or unfortunate, I will be referring to a document which we refer to as the policy agenda, where we have put this together since 20, for the 2018 election. And we are hoping that it will be there that we can use as a foundation document for up to 2030. So, it's relevant despite we prepared it in 2018. The chairman made it emphatically clear that I only have 15 minutes here. So, I don't know how I will condense a four-hour booklet, if I have to present the whole booklet into 15 minutes, but I'll try. I think he did outline also that I must make the presentation in the context of the rural area. So, therefore, there are some areas that I will just skip in the, in the document. And we are looking at the policy framework. I was trying to do the presentation on slide and then refer to my computer here. I may not be able to read the slide there as I should based on the, how the podium is situated, but we'll follow. The National Democratic Congress is a serious institution. We have been around for a very long time. We are not offering ourselves in this election in any laissez-faire way. We have serious, we have a serious programme for the Grenadian people. We did a lot of work in 2013, in 2018. And we had a lot of meetings trying to outline what the programme is all about and what we intend to do in order to transform this country and to change this country. We believe that the document is still relevant and we believe a lot of it will be appropriate measures that we can offer to the Grenadian people and implement when we get into the office next election. Very quickly, I'll present the first slide. The vision. Does that make sense? No, I need to know because we can still tweak it if we have to present it for the 2023 election. We are talking about a green, equitable and prosperous Grenada for all. I don't think anybody can doubt that we really need equitable and prosperous Grenada for all. The present structure does not give us that opportunity, especially for all. We can see it every day where favouritism and fear, victimisation is being orchestrated in our society and creates a problem. The second slide, we talk about the mission. What is, what is our intention? What do we want to do? Where do we, where do we want to take Grenada? To build a prosperous Grenada based on environmentally sound principles and a just and equitable society. Does that make sense? Hmm? Answer me. Because we are aware of what happened in Satez and we are aware of what happened in Las Vegas. So, despite we want to develop our nation, we have enough respect for the environment. And we want to keep that in mind as we move forward. The next slide. We have, we have outlined the, the policy framework. And there I have highlighted about six of them that I think might have been appropriate at this point in time. A well-ordered and equitable society. Hmm? Sometimes we wonder if we have it. And what I will do, I will take each one of them, a well-ordered and equitable society, and just speak briefly in terms of what we intend to do in that particular area. First of all, next slide. What we are looking at here is a national sovereignty, national heritage, national pride and patriotism. Do we have that in Grenada at this point in time? At one point in time, we were all proud to be Grenadians. We could have gone to Trinidad, St. Vincent, Europe, North America and say, "I am a Grenadian". Today, with due respect, many of us, if we are called upon to raise our hands and say, "Oh, who from Grenada", we might be looking around to see how many people are around before one of us raises our hand. And that's, and that's the honest truth. No, you do not want to live in a society whereby we are brought to feel in that way. We want to walk with our shoulders high. We want to walk with a sense of pride. We want to be proud of our nation. We have things in Grenada to be proud of. You want to go to North America and say, "I came from the country where Kierney James came from", hmm? You want to be proud and say, "My Prime Minister is the right honourable Dr. Kit Mitchell", or in the future, 2023, Adrian Thomas. Hmm? I didn't hear that. Brothers and sisters, in order to reach that level, we believe that we must, one of the programmes that brought us there is the citizenship by investment programme. That is a programme that the NDC has on its agenda. This is a programme that can work wonders for this country. This is a programme that can generate the kind of capital that we're in dire need of. The way it has been done now, we call in for a serious review of that particular project. And the Congress have a plan to develop that project whereby we can move forward and it can help. We still have a lot of work to do in regards to the constitutional, the constitution, in regards to reviewing the constitution. We want to go there also because this is hindering our development. And it is important, not only because sometimes it look, we look at it from a judicial point of view, but it is important if we have, have serious programme to develop the rural economy. We want Grenadians to know our history, especially the young people. Our national heroes must be recognised. Within our manifesto, we spoke about a national heroes' day. We're going to establish that when we get into office because a lot of our people do not know our history, especially in schools. They do not know our history. They do not know where we come from and therefore it's very difficult for we to establish where we really want to go. And in that area, our patrimony, it has been under serious threat. We all know what is going on in Carmarthen Park, in Liver, Las Vegas, you name it. And we want to make sure that those things don't happen again. So, we have, we have plans for that. And we want to make sure that those things don't happen again. So we have, we have plans for that. Um, next slide. I'm not seeing the slider, so if I just pull it back, please. Inclusion and national... No, not yet. Don't go, stay, stay on that slide still. Next slide, the one before, previous. Alright. Are you seeing inclusion and national reconciliation there? Right. Brothers and sisters, we found ourselves in a situation where jobs, social assistance, scholarships, Russian, as some people will call it, handouts are given, not based on merit, but based on political affiliation. We have to change that concept in Grenada. We do not want that to happen. What it has, what it has done, it has developed into a level of tribalism that we do not appreciate and is not helping our nation. We want to change that. Integrity in public office. How, how, how much more? How much more can it degenerate? How much more can it deteriorate? How much more can we lose sight of what we had in the past? Whereby we had a, a system that was well-respected. You were proud to be a public servant. We had people who were PSCs and, 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 and chief technical officers who stand for something and could have stood up to the authority and say, "That is wrong. Let us do it in the right way." Today, we have seen a system that has fallen apart. And the prime minister, in his own words, highlighted that recently. I spoke about the constitution. I would, I will skip that for now. I want to go to the, to the next slide and maybe the most important slide. We'll just skip the others. Keeping my eyes on the clock, such a... Right. For economic growth and sustainable jobs creation, sustainable jobs creation. So crucial, especially in, in those areas. My brothers and sisters, no one will doubt that we have a serious economic crisis at our, in our hands. I wonder if begging becomes a norm of the day. When I drive through the streets of Saint George, Saint David, Saint Mark, Saint Patrick, I wonder if people are prepared to sit down and depend on handouts. I wonder if that, that is what we want for our society. That is what we are bringing our society to. Brothers and sisters, I know this is not what we want. I know we want much more than that. We want to stimulate the economy. We want to do things where production, productivity will be the name of the day, the name of the game. We cannot afford to get up in the morning, eight to four, liming on the block. We're not accustomed to that culture. This is not where we came from. It becomes a norm now. Seven o'clock, you leave, you leave your home and going to work. Most of the blocks are filled already. And mind you, not only young men you see on the blocks, you know. A lot of the rum shops, seven o'clock in the morning, they are filled already. Because there, there's, there isn't anything for the people to occupy themselves with. The shop owners have a lot of people at the door, but the sales are not there. Maybe some of them waiting for when somebody come to just bed. We do not want our people to go down in that, in, in that area. We want, we want people to, to rise up. And therefore, National Democratic Congress thinks that we need to have a 20-year serious economic plan for this country. A lot of us may be thinking, "That going to fail us", but my brothers and sisters, the five-year term, the five-year term, the two or three years planning your, planning for your country in preparation for the election would not cut it. We believe that the policy that must be followed is to prepare for the next generation to come. Automatically, we will get there as a nation, and the election will be taken care of. We also believe that the taxation in Grenada need, need a serious overhaul. And I would not go into details, but there are many, many taxes that sometimes you wonder if it's worth the while. It is there on books. It is not, sometimes it's not being collected, but a few disciplined people get into the treasury and they pay the taxes. But there are a lot of taxes, really and truly. Um, let's take the motor, the motors, for example. Your P-tax on tyres, parts, gas, license, you name it. Yet for you, it still wouldn't have roads. If it's one sector of the, of the, of the, of the country that should have good roads, motors, they pay a lot of money in taxes. And therefore, we need to overhaul it. Um, the productive sector, fisheries, agriculture, light manufacturing, the National Democratic Congress believes that we need to advance those, that part of our, of our economy and pay a lot of attention to agriculture. Because we believe that agriculture, we can, can help us get out of poverty, rather than the, 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 the kind of program, the selling of passports and tourism, that we believe we're gonna, we're gonna, they're gonna cut it. We gotta mix it up. Um, the culture and entertainment industry, we have a lot to... We have a lot to, to explore in those, in those areas. The energy resources, uh, we were told that oil and gas is right on the surface and we'll be tapping it. We're going to explore that and see how we can exploit that. Um, the whole question of developing and maintaining a package for poverty alleviation. And it is appropriate. And I think that my good brother here will, will bear me out if I say it's a shame for Saint Mark's and Saint Patrick to be heading the least in regards to the level of poverty in Grenada, Karakua, and Peti Martnik. Um, Saint David's is not far behind, but we all know what is giving rise to that. The economic, the economic program that has been there is not the best. So we are hoping that we're gonna be able to, and really and truly, people do not want, they do not, they don't want to be given handouts, you know. People want jobs. They want a sense of independence. Really and truly, that's what they want. There may be some people that just want the money, and they don't want to work hard for it. But the, the culture in Grenada is that if I get a decent job, I can take care of myself. I can take care of my family. I can give a little to the community. I can employ somebody to cut my yard. And we can build a better community and a better Grenada. And we believe agriculture could help us in that particular area. Um, let me just spend a little time on agriculture a little more because I believe in, in Saint Mark, the whole question of developing the fishing industry. It's an area that, for too long, we have been fishing, catching the big tunas, shipping it outside, importing the cans of tunas back into Grenada. When will we turn around this thing? Just in Gwov, many of you all will be born and looking at the big trucks, loading the bags of nutmeg and cocoa, and, and we have been exporting it to Europe and importing the tins of chocolates. We can turn around this thing. And therefore, I'm happy that my good friend is here, Brother Philip. And he has taken the initiative to help us in the, in the poultry business. I hope by in the year 2030, we will be self-sufficient, Mr. Tellerford. Are we heading in that direction? Yeah. Yes, because poultry, I mean, we consume, the amount of poultry that we consume, I mean, it's, it's, it's far greater than what we, um, what we are producing. We are, we are only producing 10% of the, of the poultry that we consume. And we need, and we need to turn around this thing and change this thing. Because we, the fact about it, the fact that we are doing 10% means that we can produce. We have the skill. We have the art. So let us increase production. And gone are the days when you have quarter of a acre of land in the back of your house and you want to grow everything. Yet, and build a house, take care of your family, buy a motor car, send your children to school. Quarter of an acre of land would not cut it. So the government have to come in there and make the land available so that we can increase the production of our products in Grenada, Karakua, and Peti Martnik. I would not... Uh, tourism and hospitality services. We have to start identifying our sites that have the potential to be developed. Too often, my relatives come from abroad and I take them to Granitown just to see the lake. And the honest truth is what you're seeing there is just bush and water. We have not enhanced the site to make it friendly. So when you touch down in Granitown Lake, you want to remain there for two hours instead of spending five minutes and run. And sometimes, some people, with due respect, see it as an avenue to go there and have a lake, unfortunately. Some people see it as a site that I can go and hide myself to do my private business. We want to develop the tour, the sites. These sites have the potential to generate the kind of income for us. When somebody pay a toll, they must be able to go in there and spend some quality time. You must be able to buy some, a cold beverage. Have a nice little restaurant. You can eat something. And even the local people will see, see it as a venue to take my family there on a Sunday evening. So this is just one of the sites. And National Democratic Congress have plans for all these little sites. The karib stone must not just be a stone somewhere in the bush. If somebody tells you it's a karib stone, you cannot distinguish it. We have to develop all those bits and pieces. Um, infrastructure and, uh, things like sanitation facilities. Um, you go to Las Vegas Beach, there isn't a restroom there. Um, if you spend two hours there, well, you cannot spend more. If you have kids and a family, cannot spend more. You gotta run. There is nothing, there is no washroom, there is nothing, no facilities to rinse yourself. There's, there's nothing to even change your clothes. So we, every parish must have the poten, we, we do have the potential, we have the resources, we have the sites. Every, there is no reason why every parish cannot have a batwee or, or, or a Comahoun Park of that nature. Grenada is too nice for that. We must do more things so that when the tourists are here, we, they can enjoy themselves. And when they go back, encourage others to come again. Much more can we say on that, but I'll stop at, in, we can develop more on tourism. And then we have the ICT center that we really and truly want to, um, develop. I, I will not speak much on that because I think Brother Kito, but we, it is something that in 2028, 2013, the National Democratic Congress embarked on that. And we were not, um... When the government changed, the, the government did not, the present administration didn't see the need to really and truly continue with it. But Brother Kito will, will build on, on that. Um, we can skip that slide for personal and social physical development. There's a lot of information there. But we can skip that, um, slide and we can go... Next. Next. Which one is in there? I just go back to, yeah, take the next one, the diaspora. Go back. Go forward, sorry. Diaspora integration? No, no, you go, go forward. Go to about six, there's almost six this one. Right. And I, I, I really wanted to do this slide before I leave because I think it's, 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 it's very important. Um, we, we do have a, a good relationship with the people in the diaspora. Um, they have been doing a, a lot of human service from Time Memorial. Um, I remember going on the seaport and look for the little box coming from Trinidad. I remember around Christmas time, you get a couple of barrels and you look forward to that as a young kid growing up. So they have been contributing significantly. And I think that the time has come where we must pay more attention to the people in the, in the diaspora. Um, I, 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 we, we recommend that we must establish a diaspora, um, commission, um, including people from home and abroad and, and work in, in a way that will, they will be, they will be quite aware in terms of what is happening in Grenada. And they will be able to put in the two pence, the two cents in other, in, in, in making a contribution in, in regards to developing our, our country. Um, this must not only be, um, in a, in a meeting or, we must put it in, 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 in law. In other words, we must establish, create an institution, create a scenario where, um, the government change and that the, the principles and policies and the, the legislation doesn't change, but we can, we can go along and work and work with it. Um, um, regional and international relations. We, we, we all pledge to adhere to and observe all regional and international treaties, agreements to which Grenada is a signatory tool. We, we have to respect all those things and make sure that we are pass, and parcel of the regional community and the international community. Um, therefore, we must keep ourselves in the loop. And the last slide, um, basically... Last slide. Basically, what we, what we are talking about here, the establishing policies, strengthening our institution, um, monitoring and, and making sure that we have the rules and, and regulations in place that, that we can move forward. I thank you very much. Um, I tried to create a synopsis there for you. I hope I succeeded. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Political Leader. Let's hear another round of applause for Brother Adrian Thomas. You know, it's our political leader, so I have to give him a little leeway, you know? You know, I remember, I remember chairing a meeting one time. And, um, someone was speaking, or somebody important. And there were supposed to be time slots. So the person's, the person's time was coming to an end, was coming to expire, or had expired. So I was chairing, so I made this little note to give to him. And somebody nudged me and said, "Boy, you can impose on the man. You can stop the man when he's in his flow", you know? So I couldn't, I didn't want to stop the PL when he's in his flow. You know, before we get to the presenters, there's two points that's been made here. One is, our political leader, he mentioned about people's independence. Remember that time that I referred to in the orientation? When we had all of the nutmeg workers and we were selling nutmegs and so, and we had the estate workers and the travel workers and so? People were very independent during those days. There was no social services programs as we know them today. And people were very, very much more independent than they were in this modern dispensation. Have we improved? Have we improved in this modern time? The other thing is that I remember being in a conversation with someone and the person said to me, "You know, NDC need to start doing like NNP. Because NNP takes care of things, people's know immediate needs, while NNP, while NDC prepares for tomorrow. NDC prepares for the future." And so I said to him, "Well, the future is now", and he said, "Well, what do you mean?" I said, "Well, NDC was voted out in 2013, but NDC was preparing for the future. We're in 2021. That's the future." So as NDC in office, you would be seeing a Grenada in a much better position than we are presently because NDC plans for the future. At this point in time, the pleasure is mine to introduce to the podium Mr. Leo Kito.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Um, I'm, I'm almost begging to stand on the protocol established, but let me acknowledge the presence of our political leader, um, Mr. Adrian Posturela-Thomas, Chairman of the Party, Mr. Terry Moore, his, his wife, Mrs. Moore, and all members of the executives, the NDC. And the invitees were here to look at this particular matter of a development, a people... a development, a people's development agenda for lo-, for the local community and the rural community. When I, when I sat and listened to the moderator, I, I felt a little bit nervous because I don't feel quite an expert in terms of developmental strategies for communities. But I have some ideas that I would share this evening. And I believe based on our discourse and interaction, we will be able to see some light at the end of the tunnel. And if you're speaking about a development agenda and you are in a rural part of Grenada as Saint Mark, you have to give special attention to agriculture. Right? Tourism doesn't have the same impact on Saint Mark as those agriculture. And so I want to start with agriculture. It is still the backbone of the rural economy. And when I listened to the moderator and he mentioned about the nutmeg pool. Whenever I, I come to Saint Mark, I'm reminded about the pool. Because as Chairman of the GCNA, I am often reminded of the economic impact that this pool used to have on the community of Saint Mark. So the question is, why isn't that pool running the way it used to be run? Why don't we have the same 100 plus? 100 plus employees? A lot of things have happened, but the main crux is that we have not been able to produce the same amount of nutmeg that we produced before Hurricane Ivan. We have not gotten the support from government as we had hoped to push agriculture. So until this happens, until we can get more nutmeg being produced in this community, we would have to wait to push back that pole the way it used to be running some years ago. But I believe the NDC party has a vision, it has a commitment, and it has a seriousness to take agriculture to the next level. So those of you who dream about the nutmeg pool coming back, it can happen. But it can happen if it receives strong support from a government who has an interest in agriculture. Left by itself, left by the farmers, it is not likely to happen in our time. Because we still struggle with access, lack of access to farms. There are areas in Saint Mark where farmers are struggling to access their nutmeg. So if there is no nutmeg to come to the pole, then we can't go back to business the way you knew it. But let's look deeper. Let's look deeper. Let's look for example at what we call short crops. What is happening with short crops? We are told that our diet should be a rainbow diet. The science says this, we need to have the yellow, the red, the green in our foods. Especially now with Covid, we need to follow a rainbow diet. How do we produce? What sort of support do farmers get and guidance as they go to the farms and plant? As they plan to plant? The stats tells us that we have approximately 36,000 households in Grenada. So if we have 36,000 households and the assumption is that each household uses one pound of tomatoes per week. It means that through the households alone, 22,000 pounds of tomatoes are consumed. I'm not taking you down to the hotels. I'm not taking you down to the food shops. I'm not taking you down to the wayside vendors. I'm not taking you to the school, I simply went to the homes. It means therefore, with careful and strategic planning, a government who knows what they're about can carefully work out with farmers how much tomatoes, how much cucumbers, lettuce, peppers, and the rest of them should they produce? So that there is no wastage on the part of the farmer. The farmer doesn't have to plant tomatoes and struggle to sell. You see it often, you see them by the road with buckets and sometimes they have to dump. It is happening because the government has not put a system in place. So that when the farmer produces, there is a show market for him. There is a lot of consumption locally, but it's not managed. So the tomatoes are left to spoil and the farmer struggle to sell, even though there are enough mouths to eat the tomatoes. So a shift in the balance would be to carefully use your data and plan. Agriculture, as everything else, must be carefully thought out and planned. If we take, for instance, poultry, mention was made about poultry just now. How can we generate employment in the poultry business? It is not very difficult. Again, we have to make decisions using data. Everything must be driven by data. We know, for example, Grenada as a country consumes eight million eggs a year. We know that, the facts are there. We know as well, each Grenadian eats about 80 eggs per year. We also know that the, the hotel sector consume 1,200 eggs per day. We can use this data and guide our poultry producers, right? As to how many eggs is required. So that when these people produce the eggs, they don't struggle to sell the eggs. There's a market, it must be carefully managed, right? There should be less imported eggs if you want to generate business for our people and create jobs. It has to be managed. So that our priority as a party, as a people should be consumption of locally produced egg first, just as the Karikom policy. And if we cannot produce enough, then import. If we take this approach, enough eggs we produce, enough employment will be generated to take care of some of the persons who sit in their parents' homes and will sit on the block idle. It requires us to do agriculture differently. We have to plan it, we have to think it through. We are in Saint Mark and I wonder, what are the natural resources in Saint Mark? I'm told that there is the Tufton Hall Fall? Tufton Hall Waterfall? Right, and Saint Mark folks boast is the tallest in the island. I am not sure what economic activity is generated there. I'm not sure how much thought is given to that waterfall so as to make it a tourism product. Listen, folks. Building a country, building an economy requires planning, you know? If you wake up in the middle of the night and you tell yourself you are going to put a poultry farm in Victoria, in Saint Mark, it's likely to fail. If you were sitting in the bar, had two drinks and decide it's time for a shrimp farm here, it's likely to fail. You have to plan. A people's agenda requires us to plan, sit and observe what are the needs and what are the areas of strength in the community and how can we as a people deal with it? So the reason, Mr. Moderator, you saw those failed projects, those failed projects were not properly planned. And when you're dealing with people, if you want to work on the development of people, you have to engage people, share your ideas with them, listen to what they have in mind and plan together. You might be surprised what you, you would find coming out of ordinary people. They too have ideas, they too have a voice. And so we have to plan agriculture differently. We have to give support to the traditional crops, right? Once upon a time, when the farmers receive, how you call it? Something from banana, I think when you sell banana, I'm not sure if it was back pea or something. I, I don't remember too well, but once upon a time, farmers used to get surplus payment. I know of nutmeg. And banana also gave something that I don't remember quite well now. And those traditional crops, cocoa, nutmeg, and banana made a big difference. Farmers are very stable, they didn't need a seed program and they actually needed no government assistance. They made it on their own. Some billhouse, some botlands, all set the children to school, traditional crops. We still have cocoa and nutmeg that are still holding their own. We need support from government to push them further. You have here the chocolate factory, right? The diamond chocolate factory. But I know about the chocolate factory and it requires support from government, especially to break the outside barrier, to get outside the hidden international market and do well. Government has to give more tangible support to these sectors if they want to push. Because let's be honest, when cocoa brings money to the farmers or nutmeg brings money to the farmers, the economy starts to move. Because these people go to the shops, they buy grocery, they buy gas, they take the bus, and there's money in circulation. So we have to approach this thing with a very, very serious agenda if we want to make difference in the lives of people. So take, for instance, sour sorb. What is happening now? Anyone of you have sour sorb in your lungs? Because I understand they are not exported much now. Sour sorb is highly perishable. It does not stay as cocoa nutmeg. When the sour sorb time is due, it will, it will get full and will fall. You know what happens? If you go to Colombia, you will notice that Colombians process their sour sorb into granules. Right? And you could walk anywhere in Colombia, Bogota or anywhere and buy a packet of sour sorb, pour it in water and you have sour sorb drink. You have a drink. Now, if we take this approach, we can produce the granules here and we can also export some of it outside. But at least there's an avenue for our sour sorb. So it doesn't fall on the ground and rot, right? We can actually process our sour sorb here and bring money to the farmers. Colombia is doing well and we too can do the same. It's a simple, it's a simple factory. Now we make millions through the CBI. I'm told the citizens by investment program requires you to invest. What? I'm told the citizens by investment program requires you to invest. Now, a government that is serious would ensure that when investors come, when people want to buy our, our passports, we ensure that investments are made in agricultural sector as well. Now just in tourism, any government who has the right head on the shoulder would ensure these investors invest in agriculture. Because this is what is really driving our economy. The tourist dollar, I'm reminded, only leaves 20 cents here. Eighty cents of every tourist dollar goes out. Agriculture brings money back to us. I don't have much time. I'm going to raise off my point while I sit there, but let me, let me just jump quickly to knowledge-based economy. I'm, I'm surprised that time runs here, boy. The knowledge-based economy is a very, very serious economy. It is an economy that was mentioned by the leader of this government about 20 years ago. I'm not sure you all remember. Once upon a time, there used to be a motto, knowledge-based, knowledge-based, knowledge-based. As if they had it somewhere, but they didn't understand it. So they use it every year until they died. But a knowledge-based economy is a serious economy. If we prepare our people with the right kind of education and the right kind of exposure and training, that knowledge is what is going to move Grenada as it did for Singapore, as it did for India, as it is doing for several other countries, including Korea and Japan. The NDC started that trust when it officially launched the ICT centre in 2012, I think it was. Yeah, 10, 12, right? It actually started this. I shared with you before, because I was the director of the centre, so I know what I'm saying. I said to you before, we started to train people in embedded system programming. One of the things, one of the projects that we had there was a system that we were doing for farmers. So that the farmer could connect the system onto his drip line, water line, irrigation line. And the system would come on at a programmed time of the day. So that the farmer doesn't have to leave wherever he or she is and go back to the farm to water. The, the, the system was supposed to work like this. It's going to operate on time and it's going to sense the moisture level in the soil. So if the moisture level in the soil was very low, the soil was very dry, the system would kick back into operation and water the plants. This is one of the projects that we were working on at the centre. But as you heard the leader say, the centre was closed, but the dream remains still alive. They could close the centre, but the dream still remains with the NDC. And when the NDC gets back into office, we'll re-engage the Indians, open back the centre and take Grenada to a better place. I thank you.
Thank you very much, Brother Kito. Let's hear another round of applause for Brother Kito. You know, this morning I did a final promotion for this event where I cut a couple of clips from presentations that were done by the three godly gentlemen you see sitting at the head table. And in one of the clips, Mr. Kito, he did speak about the ICT Centre for Excellence and how much we would have lost as a result of the closure of the ICT Centre for Excellence. Now, when a government chooses to close a facility like that, that is supposed to be about empowering the young people of the country, what does that tell you about that administration? How much do they care about the young people of this country? The NDC has demonstrated time and again, in spite of the fact that it's been in office on only two occasions and for only one term, that NDC is the party that put the interest of the people first at all times. And so to continue, it's my pleasure to now introduce to the podium, Dr. Stephen Fletcher.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Organizer, Implementor of this evening's event. Thank you for introduction. Colleagues all, I, I wish to indicate that I will stand on the protocol as established by the Chairman of this evening's session. Because I really do not have the full groups of all the persons, all the important persons that are here. So I will follow his lead in that regard. But please allow me to detour a little. I'll make about two or three detours for the evening, but I will stay on track, I promise. Um, I want to also recognize in the audience some folks who I, in fact, one in particular, whom I have been in, um, in school, within secondary school, we shared from Form 1 all the way up to Form 5. He know who he is, he's sitting quietly there and for a number of reasons, I may not mention his name. But I recognize you, my friend and comrade. So I, I want to do this. So let me also certainly, um, express my sincere thanks to the organizers for inviting me to share my thoughts here. That is the Saint Mark NDC constituency branch. And let me also indicate that the, the views that I'm going to express here- And let me also indicate that the, the views that I'm going to express here are my personal views that are born out of years of research and reflections, and does not in any way reflect the views of the NDC. So I, so these are my views that will be expressed, and it is not a, a party view per se. So I, I want to lay that out at this, at this moment. I want to state like the others speakers that this evening's topic is very critical. It has always been, been important, but I think we have reached a stage of moving from important to being critical, because in order for us to move this country forward, in order for this country's trajectory to be turned, we need to in fact, uh, address this issue of people's development and the related challenges that come along with it. In that regard, let me indicate, Mr. Chair and organizers, that I have taken the liberty to slightly put a tweak to this evening's topic. It's just a small one. The topic is a people's development agenda for the rural, the rural communities, a poverty remedy. I have taken the liberty of removing, for my purposes of my presentation, a poverty remedy, and to insert instead a wealth creation mindset. So the focus is on wealth creation. How can we generate wealth for our communities? I think for years we have been speaking of poverty and poverty, and we have not been dealing with it properly. We have not been reducing it in the ways that it has been done. In fact, I, I wrote a small book on it years ago, since 2006, that was funded by the Commonwealth Secretariat, Good Enough College. Um, so I have quite a lot that I want to say on this topic, but in order to stick within time as well, I reconstituted to talk about wealth development. So that's, that's very important. And I'm pleased, I must mention this before I get into it, I'm pleased to be talking in Victoria, Saint Mark. This is the birthplace of my father, so I want to claim that. And it's a place where I spent a lot of vacation time during my growing up years. In fact, as a little boy at this time in the summer vacation, I would be in Victoria, stuck on Monroe Street, right? Traveling between Monroe Street and Diamond Street. Um, those are my areas. So I want to state that. So in addressing this topic, folks, I wanted to stick with me for a while. And, and Mr. Chair, I will ask for five extra minutes in advance. I, I wanted to ride with me for a while, because I think it's an important ride we're on. My two other colleagues have rarely set the stage, and the ride continues. It's really important. So let us talk about poverty. What is real poverty? When we talk about poverty and finding a poverty remedy, and that's why I say let's find a, a wealth remedy, what we are talking about? The United Nations define poverty as any person, a person living in poverty, any person who is earning under one US dollar, under one US dollar per month, right? So that's real poverty. In the Grenadian context, we have a fundamental challenge that we have to, that we have to address. Our ability to create wealth, our ability to lift the water, to lift that boat, that economic and social boat, to lift the country and its people from where we are, we have some fundamental challenges that we have to address. Some of them were put on us by the virtue of our very country, our size, our population size, our market size, the concentration of our economic resource in one or two sectors, mainly agriculture and fisheries. So those have some constraining impact on us, but yes, yet they represent some opportunities. So in trying to address the growth of this country, we have to address some of the fundamental problems and answer the question, why we got here? And we got here because of what I call the ecosystem that allows us, that allow the country to be where, where it is. A country in which today we have over 40% unemployment. And this unemployment is not because of COVID. It's not because of COVID at all. It was there, COVID simply exposed it a bit and create further pressure on the economic system. We created an, an economic system over the years that became solely dependent on a sector that is fragile, that is frickle, that is dependent fundamentally on tourism. And therefore, with any external risk that we face, any external challenges, the vulnerability of the country and the weakness of the economic system simply breaks open. And this is what fundamentally happens. So we have unemployment in my estimate of over 40%. Thereabout, it is worst among young people. Among the youthful population, especially the rural youth, it is extremely high. So we have to address it. And we have to address it by addressing and understanding the, the, the framework that caused us to be here, by understanding the ecosystem that caused us to be here. And what are those? One, I will start with an economic system that basically allowed for the exploitation of our main resources away from Grenada. So what have we been exporting? We talk a lot about the nutmeg pool, and this is one of my hot topics. I don't want to go there because we're going to spend the rest of the night. But the point is this, that we produce raw material, nutmeg, cocoa. Years ago, it used to be bananas. Now it's nutmeg, cocoa, sour sorap, fishing. But ask ourselves this fundamental question. How much of that cocoa and nutmeg that we produce and export, how much of that wealth gets sent back to Grenada? Not much at all. In fact, the estimate is that we receive between 10 to 15%, in the case of nutmeg, 10 to 15% of the wealth that nutmeg generates remain out there. So there is, we have an economic system that is tied to a global trading system that basically allows us to be raw material exporters, and we do not benefit from the value added that is created downstream in the markets where those products are consumed. That's a fundamental problem. And therefore, if we have to change that, we have to understand it. And from the rural community's point of view, this is what we produce. We produce the nutmeg. We produce the mace, but yet it is not back here. Let me give you this important, uh, byline. You know, when I walk down Church Street sometimes and through the streets of St. George's, I said, "I smell a little bit of nutmeg here. I smell a little bit of cocoa", because a lot of that cocoa nutmeg money ends up, right? Down in the commercial areas. It remained down there. Not much get back into our communities where that wealth is also generated. So we have a problem not only in the international trading route, but also domestically, where we generate the cocoa, we generate the nutmeg, and it is not back in our communities. And we're going to talk about a solution to that pretty soon. So we have this mercantile system that exists on the international market, and we also have a system that does not demand that much of those resources get back to our local communities. Save and accept to the farmers that produce those nutmegs and those cocoa, they get paid, they get an income, and it is spent in our local communities. Nutmeg, for example, I have done the calculation and estimated between the Saint Mark and the Saint John nutmeg pools. Per annum, prior to Hurricane Ivan, we generated close to $3 million. Gets spent in our local economy. That is what came to the farmers through advanced payments and bonuses. Significant amount of money. So let us go. So that's one part of the, of the system that caused us really to be where we are today. The second point I want to move on to quickly is the political ideas, the political philosophies. Folks, poverty and underdevelopment doesn't arise like that. God didn't put us on this earth and says, "Go and live in poverty", or some of you must be in poverty while some live nice and dry and hunky-dory. It is political ideas, political philosophies that create the system that allows some people to be living in poverty and some people not. It is a system that also tied to an electoral system that causes us to be in a situation where some people have to be on their knees and begging while others walk tall and drive high. So we have to look at this political system that lead to the governance system that allows that to happen. So if people thinks that some people must live in a particular way, and they use the political power and clout to engineer in this country and in other countries, social and economic injustice, then we're going to have poverty. And therefore, to change that model, it means we must change the people that has that mindset. And if the people cannot change, and if the, if the, the, the ideas cannot change, we must change the people. It is simple as that, because we need persons that are people-centered, people-focused, in order to make those changes. We have had experiences in this country before where the, the, the poverty levels started to decrease significantly simply by a party and an organization that shared certain philosophies and that was doing it for real, putting real structures, real systems, real processes in place to lift the economic water and, and make a change. So we really have to look at what those, those issues. So we are at a stage now where we are talking about how do we move our rural communities? How do we move? How do we create an agenda for change? The agenda for change, and I must repeat, must come from the people that exercises the political power to make it happen. It's not going to happen any other way. Do not fall for this argument that some people are just lazy and not willing to work hard. They're just willing to sit down there and beg and, and push out their hands and ask for something to fall in it. I do not buy into that philosophy. I think none of us and the persons out there deliberately decide that they are going to live like that. They are going to live without running water, without a proper education system, right? They are going to live in a situation where it is difficult to have medical care and have access to medical care, where child, child mortality rates are very high. Nobody sits down and decides, "This is the kind of life that I want to live", not at all. But the system imposed that on us. And therefore, we need a system, and to segue into one of my colleagues, two of my colleagues' presentation, that fundamentally are people-centered, that talks about people and not about gross, the gross domestic product, not about the GDP. This is a nice term that is used to tell us how much money the country generates per annum. What we are interested in is the quality of life of our people. The quality of life, which talks about our housing stock and access to housing stock, our access to medical care and medical benefits, our access to jobs and job creation, and the allowing for our communities to develop. This is what we got to talk about. We got to talk and we got to focus on a system, folks, and, and, and you in the NDC, that is developing the policies. We have to look at how the lopsided development in the country has led to the, what we call the urban drift, where persons from the rural communities are forced to leave Saint Mark, Saint Patrick, Saint Andrews, and everybody rushing down to the south to look for a job in construction, in the tourism sector, because there is nothing to go by much in the rural communities. And that is devastating. What this rural drift does, and, and we live it ourselves, you know it. I'm only saying it because I have the liberty to say it standing here, but you live it every day. When especially the males leave and the females as well, leave the rural communities and head south, what happens? You leave a family behind. Not only sometimes for the day, but because the salary that you are working for in the south, you are forced to rent and stay away from the family for a week, weeks and months before you get back home. So the family is without a member, and we know what that leads to. The second thing, and very important, Grenada is a small holding economy, small farmers. And some of us, even if you may have a white-collar job or you work in St. George's, when you get back home, you have a plot of land. And you go and you till that land, and you generate some crops that feeds the family and that yourselves. When you move that person, or when that person is forced to leave their local communities and relocate, we lose that productivity. Your leader, Adrian Thomas, dealt with this issue of productivity. So anytime we have those imbalances, we impact on productivity, and it can be a challenge for us. So we have to look to see how in fact, we can, we can, we can change this model around and, and, and we can make it much more effective. On the issue of agriculture, please let me say this, that we cannot discuss agriculture and its contribution to the local economy in the traditional way as looking at the primary material, the raw crop, the nutmeg, the cabbage, the carrots and so forth. We have to take it up a bit. For us to really generate monies from agriculture, we have to start to talk about value-added products. We see it every day what's happening to us, challenges in getting the raw commodity out. The same sour sorap that was big do a couple months ago, even a couple years ago, what started happening? It's a raw, primary commodity. It is subject to the vagaries of the buyers on the international market. Grenada is not the only producer of sour sorap. So what happens? Yes, we have a market. But when the larger producing countries start to produce sour sorap, and they start to get accepted into the US market, what's going to happen to our raw commodity? It goes down. It slumps, price slumps. And we have the same challenge, by the way, that nutmeg and cocoa has. About two years ago, there were key personnel who were saying, "Look, look at what happened with nutmeg. Price is low. Let's go to sour sorap." Sour sorap prices were high, probably remains high, but let us see for how long. Let us see how long that cycle of high price is going to last. So what we have to do, we have to create agribusinesses. We have to create value-added businesses. We have to get the sour sorap, get the cocoa, get, and, 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 and start developing on this. The Diamond Chocolate Factory, which I've noted here, is a prime example, is a prime example of what we need to get done. But this is only scratching the surface. We can do much more. But Diamond have set the pace of what can be done and what needs to be done. So let me hasten to talk about how we are going to solve this issue of financing those, those, those things, without going into the areas that my colleagues have already delved into, and to also leave some space for questions and comments. Folks, we cannot undertake any serious development without finance. We need to generate the income. As I said before, the economy is, may be small. We have two or three products that we're solely dependent on, including tourism. Uh, so how do we address this issue? And there are many, uh, ideas around here yourself. I'm sure you, you have got millions of ideas that you will share with us, yeah? And I literally say millions, yeah? Everybody will have a couple thousand, right? But we have, the point is that we have lots of ideas that we can share. But let me just delve into, into two critical areas that I see some possibilities for us to look at. The diaspora always comes up. And you know, there is something important about this diaspora story that we need to keep talking about and telling stories. We have, outside of Grenada, more Grenadians than the current population. Those persons who left Grenada, they generally left with the prospects for a better quality of life. They wanted to end the, the problems that we are discussing here today. They wanted to provide for a better life for the people. So they went abroad, they took risks, they took chances. And part of that, they continue to send whatever little finance they can back to Grenada, back to their family. One of the noted things about our people is that we do not forget our own. We do not forget our own. We always look after our people. We do not forget our own, we always look after our people. So there have been quite a lot of talk about engaging the diaspora more and more, having them as a sixteenth constituency, um, developing mechanisms and processes and so on to enhance the resources that we are getting here. But there is an aspect that we forget, folks. And again, I, I wish to put it out there that probably the policy committee can, should, should look at. Let's be honest about this. You know, we got a lot of Grenadians who are residing out there, who are not an integral part of the social security system in those countries and who are not likely to benefit from social security pensions and so on in the old age, in the time of retirement. But they have been given a lot to us, right? Those same persons are very likely to want to return to Grenada, especially those who are living in coal countries. When the rheumatism start coming in and the bones start aching, they probably wants to be back. So can we not think through a system that allows for those persons overseas to pay into the national insurance scheme? Or create a private sector market, encourage the development of a private sector market where pensions, where these persons can buy pension plans? And while they are there, they finance those pension plans. That will do two or three critical things for us. One, it will give us some advance cash that we badly need. Secondly, it will allow us to invest in the development of our people and our economy while they wait to get it back. Thirdly, it will be to their benefit, to their benefit in the longer term, that they will benefit from such contributions which they are making. This idea is not quite novel. I have thought about it while outside there and from, you know, some of you may recall that in, in 2010, there was a, the first major move to establish a serious diaspora, diaspora program. Barbados is one such country that has embarked on such initiative. Why can't we? Why can't we embrace our people, all of our peoples, in a serious and fundamental way other than encouraging going to Western Union, important as that is, critical, it pays bills, it aids into, you know, construction, medical bills for other members of the family and so on. That is important. But let us think about the future and having them part of our family. The other issue I want to put out on finance is, is this. Yeah, two more, two more minutes, right? No need, no, no need to write it. I hear it, okay? No need, no need to write it, I hear it, alright? I chair as well, right? So, but listen, listen to this, folks. We have a number of different groups operating, for example, in St. Mark. We have nutmeg farmers, cocoa farmers, fishermen and so forth. Can we develop a novel, I may have to shout now because of the rain, right? So can we develop? I think the chairman prayed for that rain, you know? It's a nice way to tell me time to zip my lip, right? I think that chairman prayed for that rain. Because it is really heavy, I can barely hear myself, barely hear myself here. Um, yeah, but, but I also pray for a technique to keep the rain out, so. So anyway, the, the second point I want to make regarding financing, from a village level, from a community level, we need to get together and do an upgrade on Susu, right? I know Susu had its problems, it had its issues. But we got to find a way to get the community to save together and spend together. We need to put our minds, and I, I have not cleared my mind yet as to how it would work. I have some ideas on it, but I would not present it, Mr. Chair, in the interest of time. But I really think we need to focus on how we can be more self-sufficient. The COVID pandemic has demonstrated all those things, the need for us to look inward, to look, the need for us to develop our people and to develop our resources. So as I leave this formal part of the presentation, I, I want to encourage all of us to say this is a people's development agenda. It is not a color agenda. Poverty alleviation, wealth creation and the development of our communities is not a party issue. It is a people's issue, and we should encourage every single individual to pay attention to their development and to take it into their hands. And if the people cannot change, change the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Fletcher. You know, I was just told that I give, um, I give preferential treatment to the man on the west coast. In any event, you know, we wanted to make this not about us just talking down to you, the participants. Not just about us talking to the people out there, but to provide as much chance for responses from you, for you to share your own perspective, your own opinion, your own outlook as to what you think is required, what you think is needed for us to experience meaningful development in the rural communities. And, um, so at this point in time, is where we get to your voice, is where you get to speak, is where you get to share these opinions, where you get to ask questions, and I trust that some of those, um, those elements that our presenters weren't able to get into because of time constraints, that they will be able to speak to those issues in this open session. So at this juncture, the flow is open to anyone to make a comment, to ask a question or whatever input. The mic is yours, there's a microphone down there in the hall that you can have the opportunity to share with us. Okay? Um, in the interim, before anyone, before, while maybe you're gathering your thoughts together, I just want to call to the head table to indicate, um, you know, so that they can share any particular, any specifics that they felt was critical to the presentation, that they didn't really get the opportunity to delve into while we await your, your questions and your comments and so. So if they, any one of them can, um, begin to share on that issue with us. Um, before, uh, uh, there's also one thing I want to, I want to say. Mention was made about our tourism and the fact that the COVID experience has demonstrated how fickle our tourism product is. But we know that our tourism, our tourism product is not something that we can dismiss. And there are certain, there are certain things that we are involved in. There are certain elements that we have spoken to, like with our agriculture and, and so, that can be tied in with our tourism. Mention was made by Mr. Keto about St. Mark having the highest waterfall. We have Tufton Hall waterfall. Those of you who's visited there, who have seen it, we have three tires, it's not just one, one level. It's three levels to the Tufton Hall waterfall, the tallest waterfall in Grenada. Many people don't know about it. Uh, there's a young man right here in Victoria, um, running a, a very modern sort of tour operation. Yeah, I intend to have him on one of the programs coming soon. And, um, you know, they, they're going the extra mile in terms of modernizing the services that they provide. You have a tour guide who goes to classes at TMC and goes to classes at SGU and so, because they're looking to upgrade themselves and they're looking to offer the kind of professional service that can attract people from overseas. Um, mention was made about the diaspora and their contributions. Now, we've had significant contributions, as been said, in terms of, um, remittances. But it's time that we transform from just remittances into some, some portion of that money going into some meaningful investment in projects in the rural communities that can provide employment and generate income. So these are the things that we need to look at. That's the kind of conversations that's taking place presently behind the scenes. There are people in the diaspora out there who's willing to walk along that lines. There's a move right now to have a diaspora entity established and a local entity established that's going to liaise with people who's involved in different areas of, of productivity in the rural communities and, um, to prepare appropriate, um, project proposals and so that can qualify for financing so that we can begin to take matters into our own hands. Because governments will always tell you that government cannot provide all the, all the employment that is required in the country. So, and we have seen that the model that has been, that has been practiced by the ruling administration over the years, we've seen where it has brought us to. And we see now that we have more people and more people being dependent on those government social programs. Our parliamentary representative for this constituency, speaking in the House of Parliament, could boast about how many people she has been able to place on the social services program. But she couldn't say the same thing for any development project in the constituency. And it is the case, it is the same case that we have throughout the entire country. So as our presenters have said, unless we change that policy, unless we change that approach, we'll be in the same place. I haven't seen anybody coming up to the mic, nobody has anything to say? Nobody has a question to ask? Nobody has a comment to make? No input from anybody? Eh? Yes, the opportunity is there, the microphone is there, I said the microphone is there. No, no, I said in the interim, while I await people to come to the, to the microphone. So if I have been hindering people, I, my apologies. I, as I will say it again, the microphone is open and you, for your comments, for your queries and so. So here we had, so here we have Mr. Philip Telisford, who has traveled all the way from St. George's Southeast constituency to be with us here this evening.
Chairman, thank you. And I am taking the first bite because I really have to leave. Not wanting to be contradictory, I want to say firstly that I agree with most of what is being proposed, um, here tonight, especially as it relates to agriculture and agro-processing. I really fundamentally believe that these are areas that must be given urgent attention if we have to speak to the unemployment situation that has been plaguing our societies for the longest while. But the vision of the party speaks to a green, prosperous and equitable Grenada. And during your discourse, I was trying to figure out where were we in respect of the work that was done in 2008, thereabout and a little beyond that, in respect of our party's position with our carbon resources. I know we've done quite a lot of work with that. Um, I did hear you mention though, to some extent, I think the political leader I'm speaking to actually, uh, to some extent, the drilling for oil. Now, we recognize that there is nothing, absolutely nothing being said about our resources, our carbon resources at present. We also pay attention to the fact that our neighbors in the south, Guyana, have discovered oil well after Grenada and has done tremendous, tremendous exploits with, with their resources. As a matter of fact, they are doing extremely well with drilling for oil as we speak. I speak of the green environment because what Guyana is doing presently is that they are making preparation using the carbon resources or the oil resources to make preparation for a green, sustainable environment. In other words, the oil mainly in time to come, not long from now, and they have started, will be used mainly to ship outside, mainly to ship outside. While they invest into solar energy, hydropower and electric, uh, electric cars and so on and so on and so on. What is our strategy as a party dealing with our carbon resources in the context of our vision that speaks to a green economy? Thank you.
Okay, so there we have the question from Mr. Philip Telisford wanting to find out, seeing that we, we advocating for a green economy, what is our, what's the party's position in the context of our oil explorations and the prospects that it holds?
Right. Um, because I did mention the whole question of energy. And I, I said because of time I can go to the table, that's absurd, right? However, um, in our policy agenda, which is widely published on our, on our website, um, I presently am on that document, page nineteen. It clearly outlines, um, what we intend to do in regards to reducing our, our carbon footprint by winning our economy and society off total dependence on diesel and gasoline. Um, secondly, we are, we have always been advocating from the time it was in government to invest heavily in renewable energy. And we have, and we had engaged people in that, on that matter also. Um, we started a, a dialogue with Trinidad and Tobago. We pledged in 2018 that we're going to continue that process and we had, we advanced that. However, where we are now today, I don't think anyone can assume that it's the NDC responsible for the position we are in today. I think the present administration, um, got this whole scenario tied up with other people. Um, they have been working with, um, GPG, um, they have been working with, 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 with the Russian people. Um, they are tied up in, in, in arbitration and all, all those other things. So the, 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 the present situation is not, um, something that we are very proud of. But we pledge in terms of going forward to continue to explore and see if we can exploit the resources that is, that might be in our, in our waters. I hope I answer your questions, so.
Uh, before we move forward, is there any way for our technical operator to make it possible for the people online to increase the, the volume levels for the people online? I see some comments online saying that the volume, the audio is very low. Okay, um, any, any, anyone else?
Good night to all. Um, my name is Derek Barry, I came in a little bit late. So I was only privy to, um, Dr. Fletcher's presentation. And my question is... And my question is, or first, before I ask my question, Dr Fletcher specifically said, he made it very clearly that he was speaking not as an NDC executive or member, but he's speaking for himself. I thought he did his presentation very well, but my question is, and I have a few questions. You haven't spoken about the structure. Is your, are your ideas would be, are you asking for your ideas to be incorporated in the programme of the NDC? Or you're just throwing the ideas out there to be digested by those who are interested in your ideas? I also want to comment, I think I'm old enough to remember going to school during the gary days, during the revolution and I'm presently existing. During the gary days, yes, there was a lot of difficulties, brutalisation and so forth. But I remember very vividly that my mother and father used to get up every morning to go to work, even though they're working maybe a dollar, two dollars or three dollars a day. My father would get up, there's a Janet truck that used to pick him up, he did the road. So I remember those days, you had people, their estates were functioning. So in those days, people were working, people were eating. Yes, we were poor, but we were not hungry. During the revolution, we were very happy people, manufacturing products. Now, what do we have? What do we have? And I would like maybe for someone to, to sort of analyse and compare those days, those years. Because now what you, what you, what is happening is basically survival. Everybody's out on the side of the road doing barbecue, everybody's selling barbecue. What is happening? Can somebody sort of give us that comparison as to what you think went wrong? What is it that you think went wrong? All right, I thank you.
Thank you very much. Any response from the head table on this one?
Mr Barry, I wish to be the first to comment. In terms of what we experienced under the PRG, we all who are old enough would recall that there was a policy agenda of the PRG, right? So when we, remember the mango nectar, it was a policy of the government, right? All that they did, the, the thistle fish that it produced, it was driven by government policy. So we were able to do that well because the government of the day had a policy agenda on agriculture, right? We have since lost this. Government today is not as directly involved in agriculture as was the PRG. So here is the reason for that shift that you noticed.
All right. Brother Barry, thanks very much for your, your questions and especially the one that, that was directed to me, yeah? So, so let's get this very clear upfront that you asked a question whether I'm just throwing ideas out there with the hope of somebody listening or whatever. Well, I was invited to be here, I did not speak from the floor, I spoke from, from the head table. And therefore I would think that being invited, the, the head chairman thought I had something to see that is worth listening to, that can be incorporated into policy programmes. Now, what I see may not be valuable tonight, he might say, well, you know, not good enough, but there might be other things. So my hope is that whatever two pence we all had, not just myself, but I want to encourage you, the participants here, to also make contributions. Let your voices be heard, say what's on your mind, speak up, give ideas, right? So that together, the, the party can use those ideas to enhance its programme. Because as I understand it, this is the purpose of this evening session, is to get ideas and, and to have it, you know, blend into an enhanced programme. So that's my first response. The second issue regarding, the broader issue that you raise, I want to add to my colleagues' suggestions regarding as to why we are, where we are. I think there are three differences we have to look at. Firstly, is a question of confidence in your government. The people acted, the people moved, especially during the revolutionary period, because people had confidence that the programme of the, the programme of the government were people-centred, people-focused, right? Second element, there was an element of mobilisation, where the PRG and the New Zealand movement focused on mobilising the people to participate in economic development, not just, you know, in a, in a Harris Ferry kind of way, but you had zonal councils, at the parish level, you had village meetings and so towards the economic participation. And thirdly is the element of being people-centred, right? So Mr Chaffey, may allow me, one element I did not put on the table here, again, I want us to think about this in a, in a very serious way, yeah? Now let me just put out two disclaimer before I made the point, that I am not, I've never used ganja in my life, I do not benefit from ganja secondly in any way, but I want to put this on the table tonight, as I have done in other forums, it's not the first time. As a matter of fact, in February, I participated in a high-level forum on ganja business in this country that was organised by the Conference of Churches and the NGO community, the international, the inter-agency group of development organisations. There is this question of legalising or, there's another word that is used, decriminalising ganja. Now, there is legislation, as I understand it, that's been worked upon as we speak, right? And that all came out of the CARICOM plan. CARICOM had a major study that was done on it, so it's nothing secret, it's nothing under the table, it's a regional programme and regional governments have been mandated by CARICOM to look at this issue and to take appropriate action at the domestic level. So for what is what, I wanted to throw it out that we begin to consider what can be done with this crop. It is part of our agricultural landscape, right? Now I know there, there are religious people here who have different views on this matter as anybody else, but I think it's important that we begin to give some thought to it. The last point I want to make on this, in the presence of my, the, the, the political leader of the NDC, if my memory serves me very well, and I think it still holds, Mr Chair, the NDC party was the first political party in Grenada to make a public statement, a press conference was held on this matter. So the question is, where are we today on this policy issue? Because I have not heard about it since then. So what, what is our, our policy on, on, on this? Well, I expect our political leader will be able to give us some insight into that. But before we get into that, one of the things I want to say on that issue, that cannabis issue, is that we have to appreciate the fact that this cannabis issue is not something that just dropped out of the air upon us. We have, we have CARICOM and our CARICOM leaders sat among themselves and in their wisdom came up with the need, they felt it, we have gotten to the stage, especially the way things have, things are changing in the world surrounding that issue, that we've gotten to the stage where we need to do something about it. And so you find that a committee was put in place and a report was provided and since then, all of the countries involved were supposed to come back and report to the countries and have tongue-hall meetings and stuff like that. Grenada seemed to have been the only one where that didn't take place, it wasn't driven by government. And the first such event that we had is what Dr Fletcher spoke about when the civil society organisations held that event. And we do know too that it was the NDC who established a policy on the cannabis issue that started this whole conversation that's taking place right now, where our government has indicated that they've drafted legislation, we're waiting to see that legislation to take to parliament in the not-too-distant future. So, Mr Bill?
Yes, well, I'm very happy that the question has been asked, it's been asked from my colleague at the head table. It is something that we have been, well, the, the NDC has been following the development in CARICOM and we decided that the, what CARICOM has reached a position now where they have done sufficient work on it in order for, for it to be disseminated in the, in the member states. And we held this press conference many months ago where we are, we are advocating to decriminalise the marijuana. Some people are calling for it to be legalised and there's a difference between legalising it and decriminalising it. We, with, with thought maybe it's arresting people and jailing people for one split for ums of marijuana, we may have the richest position where we have to make, make the distinction. So the, the container of marijuana that we pick up on the seaport, the bags of marijuana may, should be treated differently to if you pick up somebody on the street or in the backyard. I've been to Canada in June and many of the homes that I visited in the backyard, they have, I mean, really and truly, if it was less than a hundred pounds, maybe I could have climbed the trees. They were that big, but at least they have, they were entitled to full trees in the, in the backyard. So that is what we are advocating. The government was a little coward, the present administration, they were a little coward in the, in the thinking and as soon as we, we had the press conference, well, they jumped on the bandwagon too. And I think they had a meeting in the Trade Centre, a consultation, they are now considering, I have not seen any, any legislation, but I, I heard that there are some, that there is something in the making and we, we look forward to, we are not in office per se to pass legislation, but we are calling for the, we are calling for it. So that's where it, that's where it is presently.
Anybody else? Any comments, yes, Mr Chairman? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make up.
Volume? Yes, speak, 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 just speak up a little. Now the, the mic is up. Oh, it must have switched off accidentally. Volume, yeah?
All right. It's too low now. Now, as we're speaking on the topic of marijuana, right? I mean, I don't see why marijuana should be discriminated because it's like a plant just like any other plants. Okay, so first, we don't have no other agency to come and tell us about marijuana. It's a plant like a nutmeg, like a cocoa, it's God created that plant and we cannot change it. So we have to live with that. I don't smoke, you know? I, I don't smoke marijuana no more, but I used to, you know, I used to, but I happy about who want to have the fun with it, you know? But, you know, my main issue now is to talk about a certain issue. Now we're speaking, but then, we don't have a representative for Saint Max, but nobody speaks about it. We need to get a person to represent us in our constituency for Saint Max. And that's it, that's what we have to look at now, right now. Mr Thomas is not going to run no more, no contest, no more. Who is it? Well, what we go do, I looking at this man, what's your name again? Pablo? I want to introduce Pablo for our representative for Saint Max. Do you understand? So we have to talk about that. We need to put him together. You got to come together so we could form a government, a former party, okay? Well, I will see you all the time, so we go talk.
Well, essentially, essentially, we have to appreciate the fact that this evening is not an evening for determining who the, who the candidate or caretaker is going to be for Saint Mark. This evening, we are here to speak about a development agenda, a people's development agenda for rural communities, that's our focus here this evening.
Yes. I just want to express and, or, or bring forward an idea that I have, I had been touring, it has been going wrong in my mind for a long time now and perhaps Mr Fletcher might be a good person to answer at the end of my, what I have to say. Over the years, I have seen a lot of young people, met, talked with them with good ideas for development. But funding was a major problem. Now, we know that there were programs like MAREP, there was programs like the GDB and other organisations that, where they give grants, they give whatever assistance to young people with ideas. But some, some of them got money and they were left in the ocean, I mean, no help. And without the technical knowledge, you know, you know what happens? Projects after projects failed, grant money failed, loon went into chaos. I was touring with the idea of what you call financing by way of equity, what should I, I say? Oh my, the thought has left me a little bit. In other words, if there is money available, young people or organisations seeking that money should be assisted by a group of technocrats who will be able to guide them along. And when their project sort of reach to a level of economic viability, these person or group of persons can now take over that project. In the big world, you had what you call, is it equity financing? Or, or you have venture capital, this is the word I was trying, I was looking for. Venture capital, if a pool could be established so that young people with ideas can tap into that as venture capitalists, but they will have to be guided. Because if you give a young man some, or a young woman or an organisation money to develop a project, a productive project, you know what, you know what will happen. So I was touring with the idea of, for the rural community, having a team of technocrats working with, with those projects. And once that project can and take off in a valid way, these young persons or persons could now take over full control and they will look for another group whom they can invest in. These are some ideas I was just touring with. I don't know, these are bones. I don't know, these are bones, so flesh will have to come on by the technocrats. This, this is what I, I want to just say tonight.
Well, you know, every, every big tree that you see today was once a tiny seed. So everything starts from just a very small, from a, from a nucleus, just a small nucleus. So I guess all of the flesh will come on the bones once the concept is suitable for a, the, a community development agenda. And, um, because we have the technocrats here with us, you know, they will be able to.
I just, yeah? I just wanted to say to Brother, um, the NDC government, um, when it was in office, had already implemented that which of which you just spoke. I, I recall, um, remember the center was called the ICT Center of Excellence and Innovation. Remember that? So what the NDC government did, the NDC government put several million dollars down in the center. And I want you to follow me. I think it could be as much as thirteen million, subject correction, down in the center. And those monies were intended for young people who had an idea, especially an idea in the area of ICT, whether it be mobile app development, whatever it was. That young individual or individuals was supposed to present the idea to the folks in the GIDC who would help them develop a business plan. And they would access that fund to propel the project forward. And we were supposed to give them technical support until they are able to implement a successful project on their own. So give the NDC credit, they were already there. It's a pity they didn't stay there.
Let me say a pleasant good night to the panelists for such knowledgeable contribution here tonight. But, um, I did not hear anyone mention that we're talking about the rural area and the development. I did not hear anything about the infrastructure of our roads, which is a, a key factor in that development in our rural areas. As you know, if you have to move anything, the roads remain, um, are hindrance. But I have two questions here. Um, the rural area is also made up of people, not only the, when we talk about rural, most people tend to think about poverty and people who are poor. There are people there too, who are the middle class people are living in the rural areas. Now I have a question to Dr. Fletcher here. I want to know how, what incentive or what drive you can give the, the, that middle class people there in the rural area in helping develop that rural area. Um, and another area of concern, I hope Mr. Kato mentioned, citizens by investment policy. Said that's a good way, this, if it managed properly, can bring a lot to this country, which is a plus. As we know, citizen by investment has a number of policies, probably the people who invest probably get a lot of tax concession and so on. I want to know how, he also mentioned the people live abroad, the Grenadians in the diaspora. I want to know how can we link that? Give the people outside there, we Grenadians outside there, there are Grenadians outside, they probably have some money, they are willing to come back home and invest. Can they get the same condition as the people who are getting it by citizen by investment? That could be a great thing for our country. And secondly, I comment to the leader of the party. What policy do you have, all right, for the rural community in investment, whether by citizens by investment, whether by the diaspora? Do you have something there to tell them that you are coming to invest and I want you to invest in the rural areas? We know all investment take place in the urban areas. What do you have there to encourage them to go outside, outside to the rural community, not in the urban? Thank you.
I want us to take a look at, Mr. Technician, number three, I think it's slide number. Still have it up? You still have it up? Are you close, you're closed off already, man? All right, there is, there is a slide that I have, number three. Personal, social and physical development. I, I rushed through it because I didn't want to talk much, I didn't have sufficient time. But, um, sometimes we want to talk about rural development and we, we more focus on agriculture and, um, tourism and all those sort of things. But the, the, the personal development, slide is up? Right, the personal development, the, the personal development, the social development and the physical development is also crucial. And the first bullet point I have there, the whole question of the healthcare, that is also important. Because you could produce how much you want if you don't, if your people are not healthy, we ain't going anywhere. So if you have a set of sick, sick people or when they have a headache, they, they, they have to end up in the hospital, we ain't going anywhere. So the healthcare is very crucial. The whole question of education and human resource, that is also crucial, not only in the urban area, but in the rural areas. Um, the, the question of youth development and employment, um, social development, housing, infrastructure development, which we talked with the roads, the bridges, the drains, all those things have to be part and parcel. Because you might be farming a plot of land and because of poor drainage, the, 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 or, or there isn't any, the, um, the riverbank, the water busts through the riverbank and all your crops gone. So if we don't take care of that too, we're not going anywhere. So that is, I think that is very important. I think it's a very important question that was asked by the gentleman. Um, the, the last, if I may attempt to answer your, your, your question, your question was in regards to what policy do we have for encouraging young people, encouraging people in the rural areas to invest? I get it right? No, you're talking about the people from the diaspora, but you also mentioned, um, if we have any plans for the rural people, investment. Well, I'm gonna tell you, it's a, it's a policy within the party that the same privilege that the foreign investors get, the local people should be getting it. So you should have a, you should, we, our policy is to have a, have an investment policy for, for investors generally. Not a different policy for foreign investors and another one for local investors. So if you want to invest in our processing, you want to go into tomato and you want to take it from the seed to the packet of ketchup. You should get the same privilege. Like the, the guy who want to put down one hundred rooms in a hotel and he gets twenty years concession. He gets concession on every bits and pieces that he brought, he, he brings in. The farmer or the person investing in that particular area must, must be able to get the same treatment. If you want to invest in a vessel, let's take something like the, the osprey to carry agricultural produce up the islands. And I'll say it here, if I'm gonna get into obvious, NDC doesn't agree, I resign. That investor must be given the privilege to get twenty, to bring in the vessel, first of all, a hundred percent concession. Secondly, he must be given the same twenty years to bring in parts and services with his vessel. But he must do that under one condition. The produce, the lettuce, the cabbage, the tomatoes, the dashing, everything must be there to be taken to the, to the islands. And that is how transportation in agriculture may be solved. This is just one aspect of it, but the general policy is that the foreign investor must not get more than the local investor. And I think that's fair enough. You direct that question to?
Thank you, my dear friend and, and colleague, Linters Charles. Um, I avoided the name earlier on, but the boldness allows me to now embrace him fully. My dear friend, very important question and it really gets to the heart of the matter. Linters, your question also allows me to reframe the discussion on rural poverty. Outside, outside from seeing everybody in the rural community as a perceived one that needs extra help and that we do not seem to have a strong middle and upper class. Um, when I made the point that when I walk down church street sometimes and so I smell coffee, um, cocoa and nutmeg, that was a part of the point I was making, that within the communities, we have strong persons financially, educationally and so forth, right? Our housing stock, for example, in rural communities, we do have very good quality housing stock, as you may find in the southern part of the island. In fact, one of the things that is quite unique about this Grenada housing stock, many researchers and visit, visitors to this island find very interesting that we have a very good quality housing stock. So I want to say, so policy for middle class persons within the rural communities. What kind of incentives can one provide or what kind of framework can be lead? This is, uh, I touched on it again peripherally, peripherically when I mentioned earlier on, uh, the issue of village and community financing, where such person can pull resources together, uh, right? And use those resources to help the development of the community. And when I say resource here, I don't talk only about financial resource. I talk about the intellectual capital that resides as well in every community. In fact, I can tell you this, three years ago, I did a study of local community development organizations in Grenada. And the reason I embarked upon it was to see if we can change the way we invest in rural areas. So you are spot on that we need to look at this. Now, one of the things we can do, especially for, for towns, is to get involved in a regeneration program that allows for shopkeepers to owners businesses to invest in redevelopment their properties. And in return, you offer some kind of tax concessions, right? So that's one way of, of assisting. The other issue that you raise is that of the infrastructure, very critical. Um, and infrastructure here, I want to broaden it as, as President Biden has done, to talk about not only roads, but also the internet. The internet is part of our infrastructure. It is growing more and more important today in every aspect of our life, education, sporting, entertainment. But look at the quality of the internet we have out here, right? In fact, not just out here, nationally, there is a crisis in quality internet service, right? So we also have to look at that and, and give counsel to it. Um, and I think my other colleagues have responded to the issue of the the conditionalities for Grenadian investors, which I agree, it should be the same for everybody. Yes. As we thought, thinking about what can be done, the thought came to me that perhaps within the rural communities, we have a lot of cottage industries. People with talent, people with skills that either their grandparents taught them how to make, you know, um, different types of, um, fudges and things like that. Or they might simply be making these things for, um, in a subsistence way. And I feel that an opportunity lies there to upgrade. Have a program to upgrade cottage industries in terms of quality, in terms of packaging. Um, you know, not only for food security, for, for sustainable livelihoods, but also with the potential for foreign exchange because we can export some of these things. You know, um, I remember, I recollected, there was a gentleman from Barbados who worked with the FAO. And he told me, he said, you know something? Every time I come to Grenada, I must look for the cassava. And the, you know, so that I can take back, I mix, I mix it with, 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 with the cereal on the other side. And, um, it's very good. So I believe that we can find ways and programs to upgrade and build up our cottage industries. There's one more point before I, I leave Brother Chair. Um, I think Dr. Fletcher mentioned about the, the wealth creation. And I think that is a very important objective of the party. We want to create wealth among our people. But sadly, when we think about, I think the rural urban migration, I think he mentioned that. Going down to the south, what happens in the south when you go to certain areas in the south? I am amazed that poverty is institutionalized in Grenada. Some people seem to feel that that is their lot. And I am saying that we have to break that syndrome. I have seen it where people jam up, jam up, you know? Yes, we have some very nice houses, not only in the rural areas, but we also have in the south and so on. But we have some real pockets of poverty, Brother Chair. And we have to deal with it in a holistic manner because I have seen it as I move around. So I think this is, um, the, the, the various policy, um, measures that have been discussed when brought together, because we intend to put a, 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 a plan in, I think I saw something in the, in the, in the policy framework, a planning commission. We will have strong, give strong planning, um, initiatives so that we can lift our country out of where it is at this moment. I thank you. Thank you, thank you. What? Hey? You take, can you say, okay. So, well, thank you very much to our chairman and wife for spending time with us here, uh, this evening. And we wish you a safe trip down, okay? All the best. All right. Yeah, Brother Chad?
All right, good night to the members at the head table and everyone else here.
Hmm.
I'd just like to spend a little minute on agriculture. And this is just my opinion. In, in any low income countries, or rather in any low income communities such as Saint Max, investing in agriculture has a greater impact in reducing poverty rather than investing in any other sector. And you may ask me why, and this is my answer. It offers a, the most direct route for rural people to to benefit from the main assets, which is their lands and their labor. Investing in low, uh, investing in small scale family farming and the livelihood of our fisher folk. This is an engine for poverty, for sustainable poverty reduction. But however, I must also say that promoting agriculture is not enough. We also have to look at other key policy approach such as sustainable social policies. How about promoting that coherence of agriculture and social protection? How about rural infrastructure? We need to look at all those things. And when we look in favor of integrating all those policies, we must then look at how we're gonna gain the support from every government ministry. Because far too long, we like to operate in isolation. I am the Minister of Education, so my focus should be on education. I am the Minister of Health, so I'm gonna focus on that. We need to pull our resources together in order to make anything work. It don't necessarily have to be agriculture. It could be in any other aspect. We need to stop trying to, I, um, work in isolation. Yes, every ministry has their, their agenda and mandate. But when we come to
But when we come together, we are stronger. When we put our ideas together, we are stronger. And as a body and going forward, we have to know how to work with each other and try to push every agenda we have, not just my agenda in my section here. When we learn to cooperate and work together, I think that we would see a lot of spillover that and we're making inroads to get things done. Not just for the rural community, but for Grenada as a whole. That is just my little bit.
Any, anybody else? This would be the final, the final contribution for the evening. Anybody else?
If not, I'd just like to say, although we had a late start and we're coming up to the ten o'clock hour now, we've covered quite a bit of grounds. I think the presentations did provide serious food for thought. And I think the questions and the comments and so that were made here subsequently also shares some food for thought. And I would believe that those of us who came here this evening would have felt that it was not time wasted. And those of us who also chose to join us online would have felt that it was time well spent. Because the issues that we delved into can only augur well for us in the future, once we continue that kind of conversation and don't allow these issues to die, as has been the tendency for many years. So we have to maintain the focus on the things that are important and the things that can make a difference in the development of the rural communities and in the lives of the peoples of the communities. So as we bring closure on this evening's event, this is where I call on our Assistant General Secretary for the West Zone to say thank you. This is Sister Andrea DeRanjit.
Good night to everyone. My job here is just simple. To say a big thank you to God for allowing us the privilege to have this fruitful town hall meeting. Thanks to Mr. Jerome for his brief remarks, the caretaker, caretaker for Saint Max. To you, Mr. Leo Kato, I say thank you for your presentation on agriculture, ICT, education and training. To Dr. Stephen Fletcher, also I say thank you for your presentation on rural poverty, new approach, rural development and new agricultural business. How can we forget our dear political leader, Brother Adrian Pursueta Thomas for your presentation? To our chairman, he already left. I say thank you. To our P R O, she also left, we also say thank you. To the media team, Donson and Ron, thank you guys. To the online viewers, we say thank you for being part of our town hall meeting. Thank you, thank you to everyone for making this meeting one to spread the NDC party plan for rural communities. Once again, I say thank you. Have a blessed night and reach home safely.
Thank you very much, Ms. DeRanjit. It's at this point in time that we bring closure to this event. I just want to let you know that we have a few sandwiches and some juice at the, in the other section there so that you can partake of with us and maybe just share a little conversation before you head home. So thank you very much for joining us.